The board's workshop, February 15th, 9:00 AM is now in session. We'll go to roll call, please.
Supervisor Brown.
Here.
Supervisor McKellen.
Here.
Supervisor Pinches.
Here.
Supervisor Hamburg.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. So I'll begin with a few brief comments and then we'll go to our Chief Executive Officer. Clearly, this is a challenging time for Mendocino County and I believe that a planning process like this, strategic planning, prioritization, overview, engaging with the public on these issues is a key component of what we should do particularly in difficult times. Sunday, I had the opportunity to meet with a member of the staff from Sonoma County and I was forwarded their draft work plan from 2011, 2012, and they've been engaged in a very comprehensive process trying to move forward with what some are saying is about a 25 percent cut to their operations. If anyone would be interested in this plan, I could certainly forward it to you. The four key areas that they have been dealing with, that they have asked staff to bring specific things back on are administration functions, clearly the budget, economic development and infrastructure and sustainability. And then in those four key component areas, they have considerable detail that they have worked on so far. They're engaging all of their department heads and staff. They have active engagement and involvement and they are truly making progress. And we know that if we're reading the press Democrat, that clearly Sonoma County has some of the same problems that we have with respect to issues of dollars flowing from the state, the local economic picture, and also their challenges to their pension plan. So I think we need to look at resources from neighboring counties and we can continue if the board chooses to move forward and do additional days such as this, we will be able to have opportunities to probably engage with partners beyond Mendocino County. So I will now go to our CEO.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, our department heads are here, members of the public and the press, thank you for joining us. We've been discussing a board workshop on priorities since last year. We've waited until after January 1st, 2011 because we knew that there would be some changes to our Board of Supervisors and we wanted to begin fresh and start the new year with the new board and with a set of priorities to help move us forward during these fiscally challenging times. We certainly know over the past year or two, as we've struggled to determine which way to go, that having a set of priorities from this board to direct the CEO and to direct the departments would definitely be an asset as we move forward. We've made progress, but certainly there's more progress to be made. So today, I'm very pleased to be able to introduce Mr. Steve Zweibert, who is a facilitator and a consultant and will be facilitating our discussion. We have approximately two and a half hours or so to begin our priority setting and at this time, I would like to introduce Steve to discuss our plan for the morning.
Good morning, everybody, and good morning to the public. I thank you for the opportunity to work with you. I'm just going to make this as informal as possible if you don't want me to sit with you and walk you through this. I hope my voice is loud enough. I've had the, you know, the two-week-long throat condition and you're clearing your throat, I see, so I apologize if I'm not speaking loud enough, but people, please let me know so I can be heard. What I'd like to do is to first orient you to what we're going to do this morning. I think you have some slides in front of you that I prepared. These will be the same slides that I walked you through and everybody in the audience. I want to thank people for coming out to be supportive of the board. As everybody knows, this is really a very challenging, tough time.
I'm not sure if they're supportive or if you're cool.
Well, we'll see. Let's just assume the best.
That was a joke.
Supportive.
I'd say supportive.
Let's assume the best because I can say, in my own background, I think I've worked almost with all of you and many people in the audience across large corporations, public sector, nonprofits. What we're going to do this morning is a process that I've used with all of those groups. I'll talk a little bit about that in a while. It's just to start. This morning is not meant to make big decisions. It's the beginning of a process and if the board feels that it's useful, then we can choose to continue. If the board does not find it to be useful, there's no sense in continuing this process. The problems won't go away certainly. So I would like to orient you to what we're going to do this morning, see if there are any questions about that, and then just get right into the work. As far as the outcomes for this morning's session, as you know, we have prepared, the staff has prepared, a list of potential strategic budget actions. They're broad areas and we would like to share those with you, let you have some discussion around those, see if there are things that need to be changed, deleted, or added to that list. It's just a starting point, but hopefully we would review, modify, and adopt a list of key areas, like Sonoma County obviously did. Then I would like to engage you in a discussion about a set of decision-making criteria or priorities, their values, their goals. These kinds of decisions for any organization, in this case for the whole county, are complicated by many competing different values and needs that you hold and certainly that the community holds and so that the process that I've selected is perfectly designed when it's difficult to make decisions, high-level decisions and then the specific decisions. And they need to be weighted, literally weighted, against many competing decision-making criteria. So we're going to have that conversation. From there, we will assign weighting values to those criteria. They'll all be important, but they're not equally important and I'll walk you through that process. And then we will literally apply those criteria against each strategic budget action and we will objectify these main categories. We'll come out with a total score, a weighted value. And more than likely, the direction that you will eventually follow will not be any one area, but this will help point the direction of the kinds of strategies that need to be combined eventually and then by extension, the specific decisions that you will ultimately need to make guided by the public. If we can get through all of that in this short period of time, that would be a major step. And then to talk about what would be the next steps. And this is really about phase one, more short-term for the next budget year, but it's understanding that what you're talking, beginning this, the conversations you've had up to this point and today really need to be much longer term. If they're not short-term patches, they need to be made in the context of a longer-term timeframe. What we're going to cover today is obviously what I'm doing now is an overview. We're going to adopt the budget actions, I hope, the decision-making criteria. We will weight the criteria against these possible strategic directions and we will evaluate each of those directions against the criteria that you select. We've just proposed some, but they may not be the ones that you find most critical. Now, what it's going to take to be successful. One, it's important to think about this is for the next budget year and that as the discussions, if they will have to go further, whether you're doing that with me or another consultant or on your own, that's not a choice around that any longer. But to keep in mind that this is the phase one. For it to be successful, you each individually will need to stay very focused on the process and that's hard to do. Any one area that we're going to talk about could spend hours talking about that issue. It will be my job to make sure that what you're contributing is on task of what we're trying to accomplish. And I'm going to apologize to you upfront right now. I would mean no disrespect, but I might challenge you about how what you're saying is relevant to what we're trying to achieve. I think that's my job this morning. And we will not be making any budget decisions today. This is just a starting point, so that should be clear. It's not what we're, I'm not trying to nail anything down, we're trying to put the foundation in place for the next conversations. And before I go any further, any comments, questions, concerns? No, we're good?
Steve, I have a comment and probably a question. I understand clearly number six, and I know that I have had some concern because of historical events at board level, not this particular board, but in previous years. A disconnect that arises from strategic planning, general broad discussions, policy overview, and then the actual budget decision-making. So would you be able to comment on, are there going to be any threads or any tangible results at the time we would conclude today, which just so everyone knows is going to be approximately 11:30 AM? Would there be any useful tools perhaps that we would take into this afternoon's session? So why, this is clearly not about making any particular budget decisions. You've clearly said that and it's more of a long-term process moving into the next fiscal year discussion. Would there be anything you would think that we would be able to glean from this that would carry us into the afternoon? Because again, I'm seeing this, we're having a process that is, I think, a very valuable one, maybe coming actually a little late on the target we need to be, you know, directed at, but is there going to be anything that we're going to be able to use into the afternoon?
I would like to say absolutely yes, but I think what you're going to be, I think what you're going to be focused on this afternoon is very short-term, immediate. And this phase one that we're talking about now is in the next timeframe of discussion. I do think that the conversation, we're going to focus on what you can agree on. That will be helpful. It will be very helpful for you and every other member of the board to remind each other of the kinds of things that you do agree on as opposed to the differences. The differences are easy to, you know, finding those areas of common ground is what we really need to focus on and those can carry over this afternoon. But I actually see them as really different pieces of work and I apologize. And yes, the timing of this certainly would have been helpful to happen a long time ago, but it's what it is. We're right here, right now, and so we have to pick up and this is the reality. Not probably the answer you wanted to hear, but it's the answer I've got for you. Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Supervisor.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that little point six that says not make any budget decisions today, does that mean this afternoon too?
No.
Talking about this session.
Just in the A.
We're not going to make a decision, why the hell are we here?
Would you like me to comment on that or is that just state? Let's move forward. This is partly the answer. Dialogue, which tries to build understanding with group members, takes a very long period of time, seems like at times frustrating and a waste of time. The problem is everything else takes much longer. And so some of the issues that were faced this morning, we've probably been facing for years because we may not have had the right people in the room, the right conversation, and they just don't go away. So Supervisor Pinches, this is a starting point. It's laying some of the foundation.
To our CEO.
If I could just make a couple of comments on this. I think that anything that we do this morning can assist us in the afternoon and going forward. And, you know, to coin one of those challenges, we truly are building the plane as we're flying it. We have had this running deficit for a couple of years and we're very close, we're actually very, very close to getting to a point where we could actually mitigate our structural imbalance for 11-12. And then we know for 11-12, we have increased retirement costs that we're going to have to absorb within the departments and within the county budget. We know that right now, our shortfall for this year is much less than our shortfall was for last year, so we've made significant progress. And as Steve is going to continue and we look at the actual tool that we'll be working with today, the reason that we've chosen this tool is because the strategic budget actions are all the actions that we've been taking over the past year and a half or so. So as we move forward to look at our mid-year report and to also plan for fiscal year 11-12, I think what will be important for this board in the short term is that are these strategic budget actions that you want to continue with or is there something else that we need to look at? And I really appreciate Supervisor Smith for sharing with us what's happening in Sonoma County and we know that, you know, a strategic planning process would be optimal right now. We have not had the luxury over the past 18 months to two years of really doing a full strategic planning process. So I think we're cutting right through everything and going right to where we need to be to move on for mid-year and for 11-12. Thank you.
Okay. So the process that I've been kind of alluding to is called the Decision Matrix Process. And you have it, I believe you had it in your pre-packet. I'd like to just walk you through very quickly what that is, where I've used it, and then I would like to begin to walk us through the process. It's used to narrow possible strategies or options down from many to a few when there are several variables to consider, which is absolutely the case in this situation. It is often used when emotions run very high. And I don't say emotions in a negative sense, but people are passionate, they have attachments, strong opinions, and there are multiple strong opinions. And I think we've got to be in that situation. Every resident of the county would feel that way. And when there are many strong competing options in a group, there's no clear-cut one way of going about it. This is when you would use this kind of process. And as Carmel said, had we started this process, and this isn't meant to be a blame or anything, but we would certainly have gone about it in a very different way, but we're at this point with this next budget of getting right down to brass tacks and having to have a way of thinking about that. So this wouldn't be the preferred first step, but that's where we find ourselves. And I think as Supervisor Pinches is alluding to, and not alluding to, but saying is it's going to be time, you know, this afternoon and onwards to have to start making decisions. Hopefully today's process will position you to much be better able to do that. And I've used it as many as 40 people sitting around a table together, so we have five essentially. I know we have a lot more people in the audience, but we have five to actually formally walk you through. The applications I've used this, it's frequently used for budget situations. I've used it with large corporations, Ernst &amp; Young Accounting Firm in South Africa, Ernst &amp; Young Accounting Firm when they merged with Arthur Andersen in Indonesia, the whole practice. I've used it with many large school districts in the state of California, specifically Mount Diablo Unified School District. They had a $50 million budget and just in their student support services area and they had no idea of all the myriad of programs, special education and all the very directed programs. If any of them actually were working and yet every year, their budget went up by $2 million for those programs. They used this process to evaluate which programs actually work and to cut programs and enhance others based on the beginning of this process. And the one I'm going to actually show you is a very personal application. It's the easiest to see, to see how we're going to walk through this. And this was the care for my mother a number of years ago. So I'd like to show you that right now. So I'm actually going to skip this and I'm just going to walk you through this slide. So what we have here in this slide are the strategies. These will be your strategic budget action areas. In this case, because what were the options for my mom's care? She was very ill at that time. It was a very tough decision for my entire family, including my mom, what to do. She couldn't stay where she was. The family decided that there were certain key priorities that needed to be evaluated, that you would weight these decisions against certain key values and priorities. So for my mom, her care was of utmost importance. We gave it a 10 as a weighted value. All of these were key, but they're not of equal value. Financial, what could we actually afford as a family was a seven. What could my dad live with since he could no longer care for my mother, but that was just a rational thing, but emotionally, he felt it was his job to care for my mother. What was the best medical care? You could see that was a 10. And maintaining connections to family was important, but not as important as the other criteria. So what you actually do is you identify this list, which we are going to do in a few moments for our application. Then you identify these decision-making criteria, which we have a set for you, but you may not adopt any of those. We'll develop the ones that you feel are essential to weight all the decisions by. We will then assign a numerical weighting value. Anything that gets on your list is key, but they're not of equal weight. So we assess a weighting value and it's fairly laborious. We will go through each option and say, for example, in this option, on a scale of one to 10, how well would board and care actually meet my mother's comfort needs? We assigned it a six. Six times the weighting gave it 60 points. And that's how you go through each one and you end up with an objective total that helps you decide against multiple priorities of which option or set of options is the best direction, broad direction to head. And that's what I'm suggesting we go through today with a far more complicated, not more important to me, but far more important to our county, set of issues. So questions about this process? Dan, did you have a question? All right. With that in mind, let's just get right into the work. What you receive before you, as Carmel had indicated and as she explained to me, is you have already looked at and have implemented some of these broad strategic actions. Workforce reduction, service elimination, the idea of centralization of services, the idea of privatization of some of the services, the possibility of a Monday through Thursday work week, you know, 36-hour, full-time equivalent schedule, reduce labor costs, which involve wage concessions, and there probably are others. And again, we're talking about the next budget cycle, what can actually get accomplished in that kind of period of time. There are other critical strategic issues, but they might also need to be considered, but they'll take longer time to actually implement. Colonel, would you walk through and give some examples, if you wouldn't mind, what we mean, what you mean by these, and then I'm going to engage us in a conversation around this step.
Steve, are you referring to the strategic budget actions?
Yes.
Okay.
These workforce reductions, like what is that? What do you mean by those? They're probably obvious, but just to make sure.
And let me say this, that as the board, as you determine how we're going to proceed over the next 18 months, the very fact that we know we have increased retirement costs and we don't have a figure from, an official figure, but we could assume it's somewhere around $3.6 million, that as the departments, okay, as the departments build their budgets for fiscal year 11-12, the department heads will be making decisions as to how to absorb that additional $3.6 million. So when we look at these strategic budget actions, as the exercise is really for the board, the department heads, this will, this we hope will also assist you as you begin to look at what you need to do for 11-12. So workforce reduction is something that we've done over the past couple of years, whether it's been through attrition, where we haven't filled positions as people have left, or whether it's been through a layoff strategy. And we have, we had a plan to lay off 100 employees. We actually laid off 41 employees and were able to make up some of the other cost savings through positions remaining vacant. So workforce reduction is just that, layoffs, keeping positions vacant. Service elimination really goes hand in hand with workforce reduction. As positions become vacant or staff is laid off, you don't have the employees to provide those services. Additionally, there are some services that have been eliminated, whether staff has been involved or not. Centralization of services is something that we've looked at and some departments have centralized. This is something as we move forward, if we have to mitigate a $3.6 million increase in retirement costs or just an $800,000 shortfall for fiscal year 10-11, is it, are we still able to have our services throughout the county or is there an opportunity to centralize services, to provide services to the outlying areas, but centralize those services? Privatization is something that we have looked at, I think particularly within the Health and Human Services Agency, and certainly solid waste was another service that we've most recently privatized. And the question with privatization is, one, is it really an option as we move forward? Is there a cost savings with privatization? I think privatization is really a policy and a philosophy and moving forward, is this something that the board would like to continue to explore or is this off the table for all of our services? The Monday through Thursday work week, we have done a Monday through Thursday work week, certainly within the Health and Human Services Agency, and as we did mandatory time off and voluntary time off, some of the offices were closed on Fridays. What this is specific to is that as we've moved forward, it's been very clear that mandatory time off is no longer an option. If we look at really having to reduce our costs, is it possible that we would look at a 36-hour, full-time employee? So basically, the county would be open Monday through Thursday rather than Monday through Friday, except for emergency services, because emergency services, we provide on the weekends as well. But this is specific to an employee no longer being 40 hours a week, but being 36 hours a week, a full-time employee, and the county open Monday through Thursday. And then reduced labor costs is definitely a budget reduction strategy that we've used over the past year and that primarily is salary and benefit wage concessions. And so those are the actions, you know, we're putting them out on Front Street. We all know this is what we've done over the past year and a half. We've done it out of necessity. Forward are these actions that will still be useful to us and that we still want to consider. And the reason we focused on just the six is we needed to be as concrete as we could. You know, reorganization is something that we've done ongoing and will be ongoing, something we've looked at. Consolidation, we know that we've consolidated the Water Agency into planning, we've consolidated the Clerk of the Board and the Executive Office, but consolidation is not concrete to actually list as a strategic budget action. So we tried to be as quantitative as we could and that's why we stuck with just these six. But certainly going forward, we can change it.
So the, what I'd like to open it up for is, and I thank you for listening to all this, now it's time for a conversation. Whether you agree with these personally, are these the ones that we should be evaluating against each other? And so just putting it up doesn't mean that you like that strategy, but it are, these are the core strategies that we ought to be able to evaluate, one against or another, or eventually probably a combination. And there certainly could be strategies that we have missed that would be in the short term that we can add. And so I would like to open it up for your conversation with each other and of course with the public about, if this is the list, great, then we move on to the second step. If somehow one of those just doesn't make any sense to you at all and shouldn't even be considered, this would be the time to speak to it. Dan, please.
Well, the only thing I don't see on that list is revenue enhancement. I mean, it seems like we're always looking at the budget from the standpoint of cut, 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 and when you look at our revenue going down, 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 I mean, are there, are there ways that we as a Board of Supervisors, you know, with the public can figure out how to raise some more bucks for this county?
In the short and long term?
Well, you know, unfortunately, I think it's more the medium to long term. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't know, short of dropping the bank, I don't know where we're going to put quick money, but I definitely think that we should be looking at... But I definitely think that we should be looking at steps to increase county revenue.
So I just love the conversation that happens. It's not just one way at this point. Thank you.
Well, we tried part of that last November, and it didn't work. But on the 36-hour, I just got a question on that, Carmel. That's, you're talking about 36-hour work week, that's four nine-hour days, right? Is what you're talking about? So we would have to pay overtime on basically four hours a week overtime anyway, right? The ninth hour a day? We would have to pay over eight, we would have, over eight hours a day, we would not have to pay overtime?
No, it's a week. It's governed by the week.
But you're working, you're working over eight hours a day, you'd have to pay overtime?
No, it's per week.
I would ask Teresa to comment to clarify, please.
Under Fair Labor Standards Act, we're only required to pay overtime for anything over 40 hours worked in a week. If there's any agreements with a bargaining unit in their MOU that would require overtime for anything over eight hours in a day, then we would have to pay overtime for eight hours.
Is there anything or agreement?
No, currently, no.
So we can work a guy, a employee 16 hours a day, you may not have to pay him overtime if it didn't amount to over?
That's correct.
What I always use as a criteria is cost versus benefit. What is the cost to the county? What is the cost to county residents versus the benefit? And, you know, that helps me weigh it in my mind. So I hope that becomes a theme as we work through these budget actions.
It definitely will. That comes with that next set of decision-making criteria. But Carrie, can I, may I ask you, does this seem like the right list? Is there, in addition to the revenue enhancement, is there anything that we're missing that we should evaluate in addition, whether we like it or not, but we should at least look at?
Well, it may be their consolidation.
And that would be different than centralized services?
I'm not sure what, you know, the total, I'd have to ask the CEO.
Well, I think consolidation would be different than centralized services, and the CEO already referred to that and I think indicated it was a little too nebulous to really adopt as a strategy. I'm not sure I agree with that. If there are areas where we can continue to combine and consolidate different departments or, you know, divisions within a department, I think we should be looking at that.
So it would need to be, I'm not, you know, I'm here for the process, but in the way I think about it, would need to eventually come out as a very concrete strategy of consolidation that would result in certain cost savings.
Well, either cost savings or increased efficiency.
That would result in dollar savings.
Right. And in fact, increased efficiency is one thing that should either be one of the strategies or it should be one of the criteria or both. And I really don't see that listed on the charts.
We'll get there. That's why we're, yes, that's great.
And I also certainly agree with Supervisor Hamburg on the revenue enhancement.
Well, I guess you might say it's in consolidation of services, but it's really not. We've done a lot of downsizing in this county and whatnot. It's all been to the employees and that. But we've already done no consolidation of our facilities. And, you know, I think we, well, we have like 117 different buildings. We actually have a building for less, for less than every 10 employees. I mean, that's, that's way out of hand. So consolidation of facilities has to be on that list.
Well, I think that's going to come in with centralization of services.
Well, it always has, but it really hasn't been, because it always comes down to we're centralizing employees, centralizing employees and everything. We've never, we've never actually put the word facilities on it.
Well, that's defined our terms.
That's what I was just going to suggest. So among you, this is not my decision, would you say that in centralizing of services, we should add and facilities, just so it's clear? Or is that, I mean, just to make it simpler, that we're clear on what we mean there, services and facilities? Dan, you're shaking your head, yes, is that?
I'm shaking my head, yes.
Okay.
I mean, it's pretty, Kendall and I were over in Fort Bragg on Friday, walking around, you know, different county facilities that are, you know, very underutilized. And it's directly related to our, you know, cutting several hundred county employees over the last couple of years. So obviously, we have facilities that are underutilized.
So when we get to it, that's what we'll, and actually, Christie, would you mind adding that on to our chart? Just when we get to it, it'll be, you could actually, let's leave this one, let's leave this one here, but if you could. I'm sorry, John, please.
So again, we do have service elimination as a strategic action.
That's right.
But we don't have increased efficiency.
I think the point, we can add it. I think the concern was, how do you measure it? In the short term, I mean, this is your work, so I'm just, as a facility, pointing that out, is it something that you could eventually say, it's measurable, demonstrable for a budget where you have to hit targets? That's up to, that's up to you and into your conversation, so I'm just.
Well, another way to express it, so we have service elimination, what's wrong with service enhancement? Which is very much the flip side, because if we decide we can't afford to keep doing everything we're doing, then we have to become more efficient about how we do the things that we're still doing.
Yeah. I understand where John's going, but I still don't think that's really a budgetary thing. I mean, you know, with, with the cutbacks in workforce and elimination of services, you know, the corollary to that is that you're going to need to be more efficient to only see it as a separate item so much as I see it as a, as a result of the cutbacks that are inevitable, is that, and, you know, just say we're for a workforce, you know, already, I think county employees are absorbing a bigger workload and having to be more efficient than maybe, you know, they were in the past. Not to say they weren't in the past, but just saying, you know, that's a part of losing three or 400 employees, is that people have to work more efficiently. And that's just my thought about it.
And I think that's happening in a lot of instances. I think the employees are making that adjustment and, you know, trying to continue to provide the highest level of service that they can. But I think we could be even more focused and cautious about the need to do that. Because the other choice, it's either become more efficient or provide less service.
Or both. May I suggest that we make sure that that's one of the criteria, that when you weigh these, which of the options actually would increase efficiency, would be designed to increase efficiency, which also would be a compounding benefit. It's, I think, as Dan's saying, hopefully, that's going to have to be built into everything. Some options would have a tendency to enhance that more than others, and that's why we're going to have to weigh them against these criteria. Kendall, you had a comment, I think, a moment ago.
Yes. As a counterpoint to consolidation of services, I think we ought to look at regionalization, the regional approach, and that would both be in the county or possible regional partnerships that would be outside the county. And we already are in a number of partnerships on water with a seven-county region. That's already a partnership that has been very successful, that we're, that we're involved with. The state is mandating the blueprinting process for transportation. They want to see regionalization. So that's where really state and federal government is going, and it would be move us to be part of that. Specifically, if we were to partner, let's say, with the city of Fort Bragg, that would be more, the regional concept, I'm not necessarily in favor of just centralization of services IDed as UCAIA. So I think we need to have that down as a.
Right now, it's a, it's a criteria, but perhaps it needs to move to an actual option. And so I did add that onto the list. So we're suggesting so far, in addition of revenue enhancement, do I see anybody disagreeing with that to weigh that? It's just one thing that we ought to consider in the way. I'm looking to see if I can.
Well, another subtext to revenue enhancement is cost recovery. And there are a number of departments in this county that do not do full cost recovery. In other words, they're providing a function, a fee for service for members of the public that are very specific services that because of, well, a number of factors, we don't even need to go into that, it's just a fact that the costs recovered by the county do not pay 100% of the service provided, meaning the general fund needs to subsidize those specific services to individuals or entities, whatever it might be. So cost recovery is another component of revenue enhancement that I think we absolutely need, need to look at.
So what I've done, with your permission, is, that's an example of one of the factors that when we're, when we're thinking revenue enhancement, we're thinking of a variety of elements to that. It's not, we're giving it definition, is what I'm trying to go for. So we've added that one, and I don't see any objections so far. Consolidation of services, any, doesn't mean you agree with it, it just means it's something we ought to really look at. Any concerns about adding that one? Okay. We are going to add to the one that's on there already, the centralization of services and facilities.
I, I don't completely agree with that one. I think it's the wrong wording, because basically, centralization services to me, I'm sure Kendall agrees, that means that we're going to do all, have all facilities here in UCAIA. And I don't really believe in that, especially representing a rural area. I think it's, when I say the facilities, I, all I'm saying is, with 114 or 17 county building, buildings, you know, that gives us a building for less than every 10 county employees, maybe that ratio is going to be even smaller. But I just think we need to review all of our facilities and see, do we even need that facility anymore? Instead of having two buildings with eight people working each building, maybe have one building with 16 working in it. So I don't really think that centralization is the right word. It's, I, to me, it should be just proper utilization of the facilities, because we're not getting proper utilization of facilities.
So my question of the, of the board on this one, and thank you, is, should we change the wording, or should it be an option that we evaluate? It could come out very low, but it, but we should evaluate it against the other options. Not whether we agree with it, but we've done our kind of thorough analysis, that's all I'm suggesting, and these are things we want to weigh.
Well, I'd just say, it's clear that we've already been doing that. So to ignore the fact that we've already been doing it is kind of disingenuous. I mean, it seems like it ought to be on there. It's, I agree with John and Kendall and, you know, any, anyone who has unincorporated rural areas in their district is not going to like the word consolidation, or actually, centralization, because it means everything in UCAIA. So that's.
If that's how you're, if that's how you're defining it, as we're looking at it.
Well, centralization is already on the list, we're just adding facilities to it.
Right. We are adding facilities to this one, is that correct? No, excuse me, you're, you're after it. But if we need to change, that's why we're having this conversation. This was just, we started from scratch, we're just trying to get a leg up on this process.
And it's actually Supervisor Pinches that asked for the clarification that facilities was something we should be talking about.
Yeah. I think it should be another, another bullet point, there may be proper utilization of facilities, because it's really different than centralization. It's a separate issue than centralization.
And is that different than consolidation?
Yes. Proper utilization of facilities.
Taking it off of this wording? Is that, that's fair enough?
Leave that on, just make another bullet point there.
I think it's two sides of the same coin, really, whether you're centralizing services and reducing the areas where you provide them, or you're reducing the facilities, you know, it's, they really are very similar, I think.
Well, I, let me give you a specific example. In my district, we have the WIS Center up there, that's probably, as far as space goes, maybe running right now, right around 50% of usable capacity. And then we have the Willis Justice Center that basically has, moving forward, has no function of, and then see the county government in it. And so, you know, that wouldn't be, we wouldn't centralize that and bring it all to UCAIA. We would properly utilize it and go into one facility and maybe do something with it. That's, that's just one specific example, where centralization, utilization are totally different things.
No, because I think we're, we're not clear on centralization. I don't define centralization as everything has to come to UCAIA. But instead of having three, three locations where you provide services in Willis, or three where you provide them in Fort Bragg, and the buildings are all half-empty, let's centralize those services in one facility.
Or utilization, in that case, exactly, that's the same.
Okay.
Help us, Steve.
All right, the help, I think, I think the help is, I think the help is simple, two things. Being fairly familiar with this process, it's all right to have different options. This takes us a little longer to go through, but we shouldn't really be in a hurry to get through this. It's about being thorough. So that's number one. Number two, if you operationally define centralization to mean UCAIA, that's definitely means some, or we could operationally define it to mean that the services are centralized, but not to UCAIA specifically. They're centralized to a place, a region, but not the same region, is what you're saying. It could be a decision that certain services are centralized in UCAIA, certain, you choose to do that, because then it means something very differently. That's up for you to decide. Or you simply could say, let's add another bullet point, which is what I think Supervisor Pinches is suggesting, proper utilization. It doesn't matter. You're going to, but we need to know what these mean when we go through them, otherwise we're mixing apples and oranges. So, does this mean UCAIA to any of you necessarily?
Not necessarily.
Okay. So I'm going to put not UCAIA-centric, or not specifically UCAIA, just for our, does that work? So when we look at it, you're saying, this doesn't mean everything's coming to UCAIA, because otherwise we'll make a fatal error in evaluating that option. So going down our list, the last one is this regional, regionalization approach, which is on the criteria, knowing it's important. The suggestion is, I think, Kendall, let's not have it as a criteria, let's have it as an option, one of the strategic areas to focus on. And you meant regionalizing within and across the county and across counties. Is that, is that thoroughly clear to everybody?
Yes. I thought you meant across, thought you meant across counties.
Wherever you can do it to get efficiencies and eliminate duplication, I'm assuming, is that right?
Right.
Okay. So, anything else? So we've essentially clarified that list, and we've added, which we're going to get to in a moment, one, two, three more options. This one gets, excuse me, this one gets clarified as to its meaning of it being up there already. All right? So let's move on. John?
So then, regionalization would become a strategy, and we would still have the shared services as a criteria?
You wouldn't, no, you'd strike it off there. You'd need to. Because you're comparing it twice.
Right.
It will skew the results. Okay. All right? Let's make, let's look at the next list. How are we doing so far? Okay? Now, this next list is a fairly long list. Now, like in my example with my mother, which you might go, boy, that's definitely not a great example, but it actually is a simple example, and that's why I wanted to show you that one. It's very clear-cut, not a lot of options to look at, and everybody can understand. We've probably all been in those situations, unfortunately, or we will soon be in those situations ourselves. But when you look at these decision-making criteria, it's what you're saying, you know, these are the things that somehow need to be represented in any decisions we need to make. These are the important priorities. Sometimes they're goals. Sometimes they're, they're values that we hold as a board or as a, as a county. These things are things that are just so important. They need to be embedded in any decision that we make. And they will not be all tens. That will defeat the purpose of the conversation, but we're not quite there yet to weighting them. And you may not even agree with all of these as weighting values or criteria. So Carmel, I don't know, let's see, can you run them through this list, make sure, from your standpoint, what these mean, and then we'll.
As quickly as I can, I will. And they're listed out here, but on your chart, we have them broken out into short-term fiscal criteria, community needs criteria, and so. criteria, community needs criteria, and service provision. And under short-term fiscal, reduce the structural deficit, because ultimately, that's what will help this county, is, and the structural deficit is that ongoing deficit that we have, not necessarily operational, but it adds to the operational deficit. Creating reserves, we know that it's difficult to create reserves in the short term, but we still see this as something that's absolutely essential to move us forward over the next year or so. Reduce unemployment costs, whenever we begin to talk about additional layoffs, we always look at the unemployment cost. So is that a fiscal criteria that we choose to use as we look at these strategic budget actions? Improve the county's credit rating. Improving the county's credit rating, creating reserves, and reducing the structural deficit are all short-term actions or criteria for the short term that the executive office thinks is significant. Moving forward, under community needs, enhance customer service satisfaction. We know that some of the actions that we've had to take over the past year and a half may or may not have enhanced customer service, we still see that as an important criteria, so we have it listed. Protect the local economy. We also know that throughout the county, we're suffering, anybody who's been to any of our, of our small towns and cities has seen empty storefronts lately, and so, the actions that we take, you know, we would like to protect the local economy as best we can. And then supporting local business, can we still support local business as we continue with our strategic budget actions to manage our structural deficit? Moving to service provision criteria, maintain core services, and there's a question, what are they? I think every time we get into the discussion, we talk about core services, essential services, mandated versus non-mandated, and the discussion can take a different turn every time we have it. But really, we need to maintain our core services, and then I think, you know, is there a policy decision here as to what those core services are? Minimize county employee job loss, we see that as a criteria as we move forward. Minimize service reductions, provide services in the cities, and I think that goes along with centralization and regional partnerships. This is actually providing services within the cities, and then provide services in the unincorporated areas. And I think that the unincorporated area is certainly the area of the county that this board serves as well. And then I believe the promote city-county shared services you wanted to take off. So those are some of the criteria that we came up with, and it's open for discussion.
So I see that number five, and that was my error, because we had had some discussions, was put, taken off and moved down to a longer term, which is promote job, that's more long-term, not the immediate next year's budget, so I apologize, that was my mistake. The number 13, Kendall, when, to answer your question, it went, if we added this regionalization, that's, I believe, what we're talking about there, so we wouldn't weight it against itself, so we would take that one off. You could certainly make a case for some of these being eliminated, others being added. The only intent was to get you started, it's not meant, wasn't meant to hopefully filter you or guide you, probably many of those are correct, some of those you could argue, well, that looks like it's one of the, one of the options we're looking at, or, for example, services in the cities, or, you know, you might argue that that's what is meant by centralization. I don't know, but that's your, that's your conversation, so I would like to open it up, if there's any clarification that's needed on the meaning of these first, and then we'll go into what's missing, what works. John, please.
Well, for the first one, instead of reduce, I would say eliminate the structural deficit. Is, we've had a structural deficit since 2005.
So it certainly would be in the short term to reduce, and a little bit longer midterm it would be to eliminate, is that correct?
Well...
You have to do it in the short term, eliminate.
Yeah.
So that, I'm just, I'm gonna bring...
Well, we're required by law to adopt a balanced budget, and every year, we adopt what we say is a balanced budget, and every year since 2005, we haven't actually had a balanced budget.
Okay. Dan, please?
Yeah, it seems to me that eight, 11, and 12.
So make your case, Dan, so eight is maintain core services.
I mean, I think that's what we're doing, is we're maintaining core services, and, you know, you know, in a sense, the whole county is our constituency, whether it's incorporated or unincorporated, because we provide services to both incorporated, unincorporated, and maintain core services. I mean, we're lucky to be able, if we can do that, and I, and I agree, we have to decide on exactly what core services are, but I would doubt very much if after this next budget process, if we are continuing anything but core services, and we'll be lucky to do that.
I think I agree with that, and I was kind of struggling with, what do we mean differently when we say provide services in the cities, provide services in unincorporated areas? County services, we do provide to all county citizens.
There's nothing to disagree with that, the only question is, everybody defines what core services a little bit differently.
But I think, I put Dan as having to have that conversation. But those issues of weighting, are you saying, Kerry, is your hand up to, or, okay, sorry, does somebody else want to weigh in? And the suggestion is, is, those are all getting at, they're all about the same value, the priority, which is maintaining as much as possible core services, that that is the same as where you provide the services. And the question also would be, and I don't mean to complicate it, but are you already weighing the difference between where you provide it versus not, by having that be a stream? So, Dan is weighing in saying, I think those are the same. Does that make sense? I mean, I'd love to hear if anybody else...
Well, I guess, I'd appreciate if there's something more that was intended by 11 and 12, what was it?
Okay, so Carmel, would you like to add information?
You know, I think that we've been, over the past year and a half or so, looking at our services and where they're provided, I think that, maybe we could use the example of the bookmobile as a good one, that the bookmobile really can provide services within the cities or within the unincorporated areas, and the critical nature of providing those services in the unincorporated areas. I, I think that the suggestion to put the three of those together probably makes sense.
Okay, does that, does that work for folks? John, any, does that work for you?
Devil's in the details.
Yeah, it will be. But, but if we can't agree on some of these high levels, the detail, every one is a unique conversation unto itself, as opposed to on a set of kind of directions that you're agreeing on, which are uncommon. So, the first suggestion is, on number one, it's not reduce, it's by law, we're required to eliminate, so we change that word. The second suggestion is, we eliminate 11 and 12, essentially is what you're saying, and we just leave maintain core services, is that correct, Dan?
Yes, sir.
And then 13, we know we're already removing, and number five, we're removing. It wasn't supposed to be on there, it's not, unless you want to make a case for it to be there.
Well, I'm willing to make a case, that even in the short term, why aren't we looking at job growth, why doesn't that underlie every supposedly strategic decision we make?
In short and the long term, is what your case would be. Kendall, please, I think you had a...
Well, not so much in terms of the, the three delineations under phase one, but going back to this is a list of decision-making criteria, one that I think is noticeably absent is environmental quality. And I'm thinking that enhance environmental quality ought to be a criteria for doing the kinds of things we're doing on that list. It's a key one that surfaces in a number of points in the strategic planning of Sonoma County. And it goes from strategic to tactical, and environmental and, economic and environmental stewardship is how they phrase it, but I think we ought to have environmental quality somewhere in there. That has to do with policy setting, it has to do with how we do business, job growth, everything that we do, and ought to have that in mind, so I don't know where that would fit.
It's a value, is what, you're saying, we should ponder that value when we make decisions, as well as the rest of these? If, that's what you'd be saying, Dan, please.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Kendall, but at the same time, I see that as really part of six, and I don't see a difference between five and six. Because, you know, if we're trying to protect the local economy, we're trying to protect, we're trying to promote job growth, and we're certainly not protecting the local economy if we compromise environmental values. So, you know, it seems to me that it's a distinction without a difference.
Although, just to make certain, you'd want to add that onto that, either as a separate one or one to that?
Well, I totally, I totally agree, but I think we're all really well-versed in the idea that there is, that it's a false dichotomy between the economy and the environment, particularly in Meniscene County.
So maybe we could change number six to promote economic and environmental stewardship, I don't know.
You, you could put environmental quality in there if you would like, but the fact of the matter is, if you do something that's not good for the environment, you're either breaking the law or you're gonna get sued anyway, so, that's just the way it is nowadays. It sounds good in a sheet of paper, maybe it makes some hardcore environmentalists think, oh, that county's doing the right thing, but by law, we have to do the right thing anyway, whether it's air, water, quality, any of those issues.
But I think the difference would be, I'm gonna, I shouldn't make this assumption, but you're saying, going beyond just the intent of the law, to having it as a value. I don't, I would have...
It's eight criteria you would use in decision-making, it's just one of many.
Well, they're expressing it a little differently, but I think I agree with both Dan and John, and I do think it's just a given.
So Dan's point, let's see if I have this, Dan, you're saying, five and six are really the same thing, and six could be enhanced with, you think it's already embedded in there, but you would, you could live with that environmental quality was added into that. Is that accurate?
Yes, certainly, and while I certainly agree with John that there are tons of regulations out there, I might not agree with him about whether they're enforced.
So we eliminate, I'm, I'm gonna write this, and if there's an objection, please stop me here, John.
Well, you know, I can see combining five and six, but I'd still like to retain the language of promoting job growth, so that that's really stated clearly.
So give me some language that would combine, it's, you know, people saying, well, you're a Meniscene words, you're the same, the ship is sinking, and we're hitting, but we're actually not, because when we go through this process, it's well worth this upfront foundational conversation, and as you see, when we eventually start weighting these, you'll be surprised at what the results come out to be, everybody's always very surprised.
Well, I think as long as we keep the concept in mind, that promote job growth is included in six, then we don't need to...
Okay, so, so, Kendall, is promote local economy, business, and environmental quality, is that what's being suggested, or you can help me out here, if it's different?
Well, I think you could go either way with five and six, I mean, it could be delineated, I, I think it's okay to have both, but just saying promoting job growth doesn't talk about sustainable jobs, it doesn't talk about living wage jobs, it, it sort of begs the question of what kind of jobs are we going to want to promote? I think, I mean, I'm looking at the works Sonoma County did, and I think it's really qual, you know, they've done some, some very good things here. Environmental component, because we're talking about criteria ought to be there.
Okay, so...
I mean, it's all about our general plan, you know, it's totally woven into that, so I think that we just need some way to state that, right? Maybe you could suggest...
I said promote job growth, local economy, and environmental quality, they're not, they're, they need to be considered together, not separately, is what I'm hearing.
That's good, I think that works.
Please.
Kendall, I have to say this, to envi, to, to have Sonoma County talk about environmental quality down there compared to Meniscene County, they're still dumping their trash on open landfill on the side of a hill east-west of Petalina, there's, they have many and many amount of attainment days as far as air quality, Meniscene County never has an attainment day in air quality, so they may put it on some brochure, some piece of paper about how they're promoting air quality, and if we don't put it on some piece of paper, we're somehow behind in environmentally, we're leaps and jumps ahead of Sonoma County when it comes to our protection of our environment.
Okay, that's right.
I, I agree.
Oh, I think that's what some people are gonna agree. Kerry, the other point, please.
I do, and I'm not sure if it goes under criteria or value, but I think we have to have, when we talk about consolidation, promoting shared services, I, I think there has to be something in place for a strong evaluation of any new program or bringing back something that's been eliminated as to the long-term funding. And, you know, it may be a quick fix for a moment, but I think we really, doing strategy and planning, we really need to be serious about that. There has to be a strong evaluation, and maybe it'd be a better way for program delivery, but I, I think that overall, every time we look at something, we have to think about long-term funding of those programs, and will it meet the ultimate goal?
So, let me see if I can help with it, part of what you're saying, in my ear, is about the kind of way you do your work in the future, make decisions and evaluate the work.
And we're talking about this, yes.
Yeah, but part of it, what you're saying, I think, and correct me if I'm mishearing you, is that as we decide on these, one of the criteria might be something like, that it's, what's good for the short term is good for the long term.
Exactly.
Is that accurate? I mean, in other words, we're not just making some immediate decision which causes us problems down the long term, we can see that it sets us up for the future as well.
Correct.
Okay, and we did have your increased efficiency, I did capture that, and that seemed to be important, and that would, if it is, I didn't, I just wanted to call your attention to that, I didn't mean to eliminate that, but when you evaluate these, is that that option would actually increase efficiency, as opposed to impede efficiency? Is that, I'm just bringing it back.
Well, I'm thinking, just let me throw something out, please, I'm, I'm thinking more on the level where the state is saying, oh, we need to put these services with local government, and, but yet, the funding of what they're gonna send to us, or how are we going to take these on and provide, you know, they're not giving us any answers for long-term funding. I, you know, and it, it gives me heartburn, so to speak, because it sounds good to the citizens, could sound good to us, we get to manage these programs locally, but I think we have to be extremely careful about how we're gonna finance them in the long term.
Okay, so let me review what we've done so far.
Yeah, I just had some wording for that, five, six.
Thank you.
Just try this, improve, improve local economy, and then maybe a colon, promote jobs in a healthy environment. Is that okay?
Is that fine with people?
I would like to see, um, business added, right after economy.
Improve the local economy, promote jobs, business, and a healthy environment, how about that?
Works.
Because the economy's everything, you know? But if we say promote jobs, business, and a healthy environment, does that work?
That works for me.
Great.
And healthy environment?
Healthy environment.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Dan, for your help. And, all right, now let me see if I can summarize, from memory here, and then we're gonna take like a five-minute little break, let me summarize, and then we'll add, just so that we can get our charts arranged, and get this graph properly set up for us to take our next step, Ben, and I'm not cutting this off, John, so... So we said number one will be eliminate structural deficit. We are taking five and six and combining them into the statement that Dan just provided us, which is improve local economy, colon, promote jobs, business, and healthy environment. We're taking eight, eleven, and twelve, and we're combining eleven and twelve into eight, which is maintain core services. We are eliminating thirteen, because we've used it as an actual strategic direction to evaluate. So we've actually made it even more important to weigh it against all of these values, which is, what we called it was regionalization, which is both in the county and across counties. And we are adding that it, what, that when we evaluate, that the strategic direction is good in the short term, it gives us the budget that we need, but it also sets us up for good for the future, it doesn't preclude options, creates the flexibility you need to be successful in the future. And that the options will increase efficiency as opposed to perhaps impede efficiency, because some of those options may actually start decreasing efficiency. Now, as you can see, there's a whole bunch of these that we're going to weigh every decision, it's trying to get the best blend across these multiple variables weighted at the same time. So I hope I summarized well, and John, you have the floor.
Yeah, I've got a couple more points, actually, first of all, we seem to have decided earlier that the same criteria didn't belong both on the actions and the criteria. But, you know, we do have opposite sides of the same coin, we have workforce reduction is the first item listed on actions, and minimizing employee job loss is listed as a criteria. So, if one is a strategy, then how can the opposite be the criteria?
That's how government works, the left-hand rule.
A suggestion? A suggestion?
I'm asking you.
You could, you could leave it and see how it works to start with, or you could eliminate it as a criteria.
It hasn't been a criteria for the last two years, in fact, it's been a strategy. Now, I think we are to the point where, if not beyond it, where further job loss does compromise our ability to provide service, I think we're all aware of that. But we also have to balance the budget one way or another. It's the bind we're in.
If, that's our first conversation.
I like your suggestion.
Which of the two, which is?
Well, I, I think it's very possible that you could have strategies and criteria that are in opposition to each other. I mean, you know, at the same time, one way to get where we need to go, which is a balanced budget, is to reduce the workforce, so it's just a contradiction that is kind of unavoidable.
Well, I think when you talk about job growth too, that has to do with private sector too, not just county government, because job growth in this county, whether it's in the county or in the public sector, leads to a revenue enhancement, because the more people have a job, then the more they're going to spend, the more sales tax they pay, they might buy a piece of property, and patient property, I mean, all, there's all kinds of revenues that way. Or they might do something, they build a garage, and they need a cave and building, planning, so job growth has to be a, you know.
I think you should just proceed, it's messy, it's a little messy, I'm not guaranteeing you that this is going to be, we're trying to make a difficult process logical, and it's only somewhat true. But it helps guide the conversation, it helps objectify, if we find, how you know it's a problem is if you get the same rating across all the strategies, that criteria was useless, if you get the same rating, it has, you can collude it or eliminate it, we'll see that when we start going through. Does that work? Please, no, go ahead, John, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
No, I, I didn't have a comment to that, if, if we are done with that, I have one more.
Sure.
We've got reducing unemployment costs, but we don't have reducing the retirement obligation as a criteria, and that's one of the things that's killing us.
We have long-term and short-term, what we really tried to do. Phase two, on your, on your chart, you see reduction in long-term debt, coverage of pension obligation costs, and job growth. Because we didn't think we could really, really do much about job growth over the next, you know, six to 12 months. So, you know, if, if we eliminate the structural deficit, create some semblance of a reserve, and improve our county credit rating, that will lead right into the reduction in our long-term debt and our pension obligation cost. It's up to you if you want to add it today, I'm fine with whatever you choose to do. I don't want you to think we forgot about it, we didn't, we were just looking at that as phase two.
It's more of whether you can actually achieve it, or even great significant movement to it in the very, this very short term. But that's where this, you know, doesn't really move us to the long term, this, this is a really essential criteria in my, I step outside of my role. A lot, it's, a lot of groups are, they do what's good in the short term, it just worsens the problem in the long term, not to have something that really says, does this set us in a a good infrastructure place, a good budget financial place, a good flexibility place to move into the long term, as well as just meeting the needs for the short term, which is what we're focused on now, but if we neglect the long term, that would be a serious failing. John?
I'd like to go back to number one, eliminate structural deficit, you know, this present board has done a lot, I think, to do that, you know, in the last decade, if you added up what we spent on the general plan, actually, we even had a special department called the planning, a special planning department with a separate budget, when you add up what we spent on the general plan, and getting that, many millions of dollars, and then actually the privatization of the solid waste, if you add up just those two things in the last decades, that's probably going to save about fifteen million dollars that we don't, that are past us, that are beyond us, that are behind us. Now, you can argue if we should have done, should have spent that much money on a general fund or not, but we did, it was done. You could argue we should have done privatization of the solid waste ten, ten years ago, but we finally got it done. So I really feel, eliminating the structural deficit, just on those two issues, this, that this board had the guts to do and get over with, is going to go a long time, way to eliminate the structural deficit.
I think it is.
Well, I, it, I think the reality is that if we're talking short-term, and then we have our delineation of phase two at the bottom, it is really not going to be possible to eliminate structural deficit in the short run. And when you're talking about teeter debt, multimillion-dollar teeter debt, and it's been dragging this county down for, I don't know, 14 years or whatever it is, to really think that we're going to be able to do anything within this, this, the economic construct that we're dealing with that's going to do that is, I think, probably, I, I'd like to be more realistic, so I would think it should really say, as it did originally, reduce structural deficit. Clearly, that is something that we should always be mindful of, but put a limit, structural deficit for our long-term goal, because it's really on par with, we've got to bring down our pension obligation costs.
If you don't set a goal, you're unlikely to reach it.
Yeah, so it really is kind of reduce slash eliminate, I mean, whatever you can.
We're not going to eliminate it in short run, we're not.
I think that's why the words were taken.
Well, I don't take that as a given.
Okay, so let's just, let's take, can we take five minutes and actually have it be five minutes?
Sure.
Okay, let's do it, because that gives us a little time to set, see what we're getting.
There may be a time when you will want to have a
Okay, switch back to the other side, five minutes. Okay. Find our place here. So, I, I sit there. Okay, so we're going to pick up where we left off.
Yes.
So we are going to go, in a moment, we're going to go through this process, we'll get as far as we can in the time that we have, we have public comment period, I know as well. Our next task, we'll really have to stay focused, we've done great, and I really appreciate it, and I know it's tough, and I do truly appreciate it. We want to actually set these weighting factors. Now, we're going to go to the, the list, which is right here, this is the revised list, I hope we have it accurate, these are the decision-making criteria. So we changed one, John, we put in both words, okay? We combined five and six, and it now says improve local economy, promote, it should be colon, promote jobs, business, and healthy environment. We combined, we eliminated what was, I think, nine and 10 or something, and put them into maintain core services. And we added to, about what's, that some, the decision would be good for the short term and the long term in mind, and that that the strategy actually increases efficiency, because some of those will, and some of them won't, or to varying degrees. Okay, so this is a little challenging part. You would probably say, well, those are all 10s, but they're not. They're not of equal weight, the fact that they made to this list means they're critical. There could have been many, many other things that were put onto this list, but these are the 11. At this first cut, that you're, you're putting onto to evaluate, there's no decisions made. If we need to change something, we get to a certain point, and you say, well, we missed something, that's fine, we go back, it will be easy to go back. So now it's critical, if you would look at those, and think in your minds, which ones are absolute 10s? They're just the highest priority. Which ones might be fives or sixes or below, they're important, but they're, by comparison, they're not of equal that weight, that's all we're looking for. When we finish this next conversation, we will have a weighting factor for each of these 11, from one to 10. There could be three or four 10s. If they're all 10s, it doesn't help us in the weighting process, does that make sense? Numerical, okay, Carrie, you have a comment?
Yes, I, um, we have efficiency up there, but I do not see, and it was pointed out to me, and I said, well, it's over there, cost with the benefit, the cost benefit.
Cost benefit, that's true.
Where, where, where is that?
We can add an oversight.
Also, is there that much of a distinction between maintain core services and minimize service reduction?
I agree.
It's good to look at this now, isn't it?
I saw the same thing.
One is about how you have the least impact on services, and the other is the assumption that you are eliminating service, but you're maintaining core. They are slightly different, but if you can make, make a point, we just need to be talking about the same thing, that's all that's critical at this point. So, John, would you?
Well, maybe just slash and combine the two. I mean, I get your point, that they're different aspects, but I think they're the same type of issue.
I agree with you.
Okay, Kendall, you're agreeing as well?
I agree, yeah, I think they could be combined, I think they are different, especially if we ever are to get into a discussion, can we define core services? But I think that they should be combined, I agree.
Now, they are different, or they could be different.
Yeah.
The implications are very similar, I think, is what the point is, so we'll, we need to do, we're going to look at both of those, is what the board would like to do. Is that correct? Carrie, are you fine with that?
That's what I'm going to do in my.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant, yeah, John, you're fine with that, okay. In your mind. And I'm, this is just, I'm putting this out on you, I'm challenging you, okay, and I, it's just a facilitator challenge. But they're not all 10s. That's the tough part. So I'd like you to look down that list and weigh in your mind's eye, the ones that are 10s. Nines are 10s, and I'd like to hear about those, and let's see, what, where are we agreeing officially? Kendall?
I would start with number one, I really believe that that's a core budget problem that we have that follows us, and if we can't get up from under that one, then our options for all the others really narrow significantly, so I would say number one is a ten.
Okay, John?
I would agree, and I might even say number one should be the only 10.
Okay, that, that could be the case, but it is of highest order in both of your minds, Carrie?
Well, I certainly think two ranks right up there, and I would say if, if you only want one 10 supervisor McCowen, I would say that is an eight or a nine.
My, my 10s were one, five, and seven.
One, five, and seven.
And then the next tier was, for me, was four, six, and eight.
Let, let's look at those, so we, I think we have quite a bit of overlap on number one, does anybody disagree? That number one is a 10?
I think that only number 10 should be a 10.
10.
You mean only number one?
Because if you don't do something that's good for the long term, it's going to come back and you're going to die later. That, to me, that's the only 10. Create reserves, that's nice, but it's like, I've heard Governor Schwarzenegger say with almost a $30 billion deficit, he always said that one of his priorities, that we need to start putting a rainy day fund aside, when you're $30 billion in the hole, you don't talk about a savings account.
Yeah, that's, that's our, having this conversation. Makes a strong point, I think, for number 10, I mean, you have to be really smart, as well as the number one, and it can be more than one 10, but we, there's not, there are nines and eights, and there are some fives up there, probably, as well. Carrie?
Well, it, but number two relates to number four.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, if you don't have one and two, you're not going to accomplish number four.
Well, for the short term, and that's kind of what we're talking about here, is number four really don't matter for the short term. Because number one, our interest rates are probably pretty historical low, what we are paying, whether it's our CRPs, our pension obligation bonds, we've even tried to review, even these low interest rates reviewed, and there's really no money to be saved. So, it's nice to get your credit rating up, but when we don't have any future payout plans to build new buildings and whatnot, quite the contrary, we're going in other directions, or do anything to borrow a lot of money, your credit rating isn't, I mean, it's something you want to work on over time to get a better credit rating, but it doesn't, to me, doesn't come near on top on the chart, there's a lot of these other things, especially, and that's why I push for enough, the only number 10 up there should be number 10, because if you don't do things that are good for the long term, they're, and depends on how you define long term, long term is probably over 10 years. But if we start doing things now to get us by, and it's going to kill us in the long term, then we're, then we're going to be in worse shape than we've ever been.
Then you're making the argument for number two.
That could very, very well be the case, now, we're going to rank these all, and it's going to get easier as we go, I promise you. Well, John, you had your hand up, and then Kendall, I think you got it.
I think that number one is obviously a 10, and if we do that, that is going to do a lot to take care of number 10.
I totally agree.
You agree with it?
I was going to say the same thing.
That's right.
Okay, all right, so, let's check, it seems like one and 10 are very important to this group, and are we, am I off? Very important.
I don't have a problem with number one, it's just how do you find, what's, what's in your structural deficit?
Well, we'll, we'll get there, but you think it's important, maybe not a 10. So let me ask, on number 10, how many people feel that's a 10?
It's the only one that talks about the long term.
Oh, I know.
And this county is going to be, you know, for the long term.
Here's what I'm going to do, now it's going to get a little brutal here. All of us, but it hasn't already, okay? How many think it's a 10? How many think it's a nine? How many think it's an eight? Number 10, eight? I know it's tough. Yeah, but it's so.
I think it's, I don't know, if we cover one, I don't, yeah, we're sort of going towards, we might be able to eliminate number 10?
No, 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 these are all on our list. We just put them weighting factor.
Well, it's more, it's vague, the others are, are, you know, create reserves is very tangible, we know what that means. Good for the short term and the long term. Good for the short term and the long term.
Okay, so Dan, have a help out. It's not a ten.
Well, no, I just agree with what John said, that, that that's ten and one are just so closely related to each other. I mean, the long, when you talk about structural deficit, you're talking about long-term deficit. That's, that's really what, what the term means to me. And, and when we reduce the deficit, we're doing, we're doing short-term work, so we don't end the year in such a hole that we have to start the next year in a hole. That's what a structural deficit is. When you start the next year in a hole, that's a structural deficit. So to me, one and ten are kind of inseparable. That's why I, I had a hard time rating it a ten. Although I think it's huge, but I think, I think it's sort of assumed under one, in my mind.
Other people?
I have to agree with Supervisor Hamburg.
And that was your point, number ten was your point that you rated?
Yes.
So you're saying that you need to be thinking, you're saying number one and ten are, are talking about the same thing?
John, John's the one who said it first.
No, I, I, I agree with the fact that all of those relate, for the short term and the long term. You know, you have to look at it, what's good for the short term, and, and then what's good for the long term, but it's combined it in, in, in everything in this list.
I, I'm not saying one and ten are the same thing, but if you do one, you've gone a long way where it's addressing ten.
That's right.
All right, so number one. How many of you feel it's a ten?
Number one?
Number one, oh, yeah.
And John, what do you think? I know, I understand.
Well, I, if you can tell me, now, Dan just said that what he thought helped the structural deficit was. I'm not so sure I completely agree with his definition of a structural deficit.
So, is it a nine? Is it an eight? Basically, four before.
It's right at the top.
Straight at the top. So let's put it a ten.
Just say ten.
Let's just say ten.
Just say.
We could say nine.
You could say nine, if you average it out, what do you get? I'm not saying he says no.
The truth is, no, no matter how, I mean, the priorities that I set in my mind, and how I think the county should move forward, I have some disagreement on what's the priority. So no matter what, we vote, even if there's a consensus here, that's not gonna be how it works out at all.
So we're gonna give that a ten. What's one of the lowest ones on that list? They're all.
Well, I don't, like I said earlier, the county's credit rating, it'd be nice to have a high credit rating, but for the short term, when we're talking ten years or less, I don't think it's really important. Because we're not gonna borrow any money, so that's not gonna affect this.
So what would you give that?
Matter of fact, I'd venture to say that there isn't two people in this room can tell us what the county's current rate, current credit rating is.
Unless I go there. Sorry, with due respect, but.
Maybe, okay, our CEO says there's three people in the room. So, so how really important is it?
But, let me ask you. What number would you both give that? Create, create reserve, in the short term? So you said it's in your third tier, what number is that? Dan?
Well, well, my understanding is that our trans borrowing is very closely tied up with our credit rating, which is very tied up with our reserves. So, you know, untangling these is not an easy thing to do.
Well, I would, I would link, so I, I agree with the prior comment of supervisor, or disagree with the prior comment by Supervisor Pinches, because I think the create reserves number two, and the number four, improve our county's credit rating, just to extend what Supervisor Hamburg said, that, that absolutely, the trans borrowing, and we could hear from our auditor, treasurer, tax collector, that's been, you know, hovering on pot, potentially dangerous ground, and we absolutely can't let that occur. And so I think for the solvency and to, to, that it, that by doing one, we are, are to some degree going to be addressing four, but I think two, I think two and four should be very high, and they're not tens, but I think they're very high.
What would they?
Oh, I'd say maybe eights. I think they're high.
Okay, John?
I think four is not anything that we're going to do, it's going to be a result of these other items. And, so I would actually rank four as a five. You know, because that's, to me, the bottom of, of what we're looking at. But number, number two.
Is higher.
Create reserves, I'm gonna put it as a nine. Because I think that is imperative, that we try to get ourselves to a position where we actually have a reserve. Right now, we don't.
Right.
And we know that we're gonna have increased costs next year, and to the structural deficit, that is not only what we wind up in the hole this year, but it's what we know is coming next year, that we haven't laid anything away for. And we've been struggling with that for the last several years through short-term strategies, much as the state has done.
Okay. So, I wanna test this, because we have to, you know, it's three minutes to eleven. And I know this is very tough work. We could have a conversation, we need to have a little conversation on every one of these, but we need to actually take our best shot at these. You've been working with these issues for a long time. And John, I'll come to you in just a second, you have the floor. So, you, John, you made the case that improve the county's rating is probably a five. I saw three people say yes, assuming create reserves is much higher. So I wanna check on, given the linkage between those, and one being a result, the other being, you know, an actual thing that you're trying to accomplish. On number four, how many people feel it's a five? Just raise your hand. I'm just testing. Number four, a five.
I would have to agree.
One, two, three. Dan and Kendall, what would you rate it as?
I'd go a little higher.
Six? Seven?
Sure.
Okay, Dan?
Well, whoever said that four is a result of two.
I do.
No.
Didn't somebody say that?
I guess, that's a big part of it.
I mean, that's, that makes total sense to me.
Yeah. So we're gonna come back to two in a second. So what would you rate that?
Well, would I rate four as?
Yeah.
Yeah, like a five, but I, but I'd rate two like an eight or a nine.
We're gonna get there, so. So can you limit it to five?
Sure, that's fine.
Okay, so if number four is a five, John, you have it.
Well, talking about two and four, the create reserves and the improved county credit rating, this mentioned here before, that that's really tied closely to our trans borrowing, and that's true, that's very true. But in the past, Menzina County's borrowed a lot of money through its trans borrowing. Number one, they had the ability, but number two, they always, because of the interest rates, they always made money on the trans borrowing. If we would manage our cash and some of our larger payments, when they're paid out in the course of the year, I think that we could reduce our trans borrowing to probably at least by half. And when you reduce the amount of borrowing to half, then you're, you can actually pay a bit, a, a larger percentage of, of interest rate, and you're still gonna pay a lot more money than if you're borrowing the full amount. Because the only reason we really borrowed that, a lot of money in the trans borrowing, because we were making money on the, on borrowing, we were borrowing for one percent each, and, and putting it in, in the, the investment pool, and actually making a larger percentage of interest. So, but if we, if, now that the interest rates and things have changed, and we have a lower credit rating, so I don't think it's necessary that we have to borrow as much as we had through the trans borrowing. All we have to do is manage our large cash payments and whatnot at different times of the year, so they correlate, so we don't have that. So I think there's a real opportunity there.
And I think we're already planning to reduce our trans borrowing by about half. And I think if we follow your strategy, we might be able to reduce it even further.
So, and that's, so that's the reason I don't rate those things at the, at the title.
And that's what we're, so that's why we're hearing. So now, given what people have said, what would we now rate number two as? Hearing each other, eight?
I think eight.
Eight?
Seven.
Seven?
I'll go with the fifth.
Seven?
I'll stick with a nine.
Okay, so what, eight, we're about, we're getting eight. That's about where we are. It's not, this is not, we're gonna see, the splitting hairs is not gonna matter in the final analysis, as long as we're kind of traveling together, so it doesn't matter an eight. Somebody like to make a case for any one of those with what your rating would be? We're making good progress. So pick another one, you go, well, you know, this is, this is a ten as well, for example, because it's just so critical. If somebody would like to make a case, Dan?
Well, five and seven were, were my original tens along with one.
Okay. Okay, and so five is, would you, would you, pardon?
Excuse me, go ahead.
Can you say more, why those would be so high, just to help influence your, your college?
I would never assume I could do that. Well, you know, like, like I was talking about at the very beginning, when we're looking at the, you know, cut, 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 you know, until we figure out a way to make this local economy work better, we're always gonna be, you know, at the, at the, at the mercy of a dysfunctional state and federal government, which, you know, we are to a large extent in this county. I'm not sure people realize the extent to which we are pawns in this game of funding. And then, seven, that's why we exist.
Yeah. John?
Well, I'm going to agree with Dan on seven, which I think also we decided includes nine, we're folding those two together.
Why? That's correct.
So, you know, I would, I would rate that at least a nine. I don't see five as being in the same level, again, because primarily, I mean, it's something we have to be aware of, but that is not something that's gonna result primarily from something we do. It's something we should be cautious of in all of our decisions.
Yeah. Your decisions will have impact on those, all of those, and that's why we have to consider. But they're of not equal weighting, and that's why we're going through this. So, anybody else like to weigh, let's, let's take number seven, since you were in a fairly good agreement on seven. Kendall?
I would suggest nine on number seven.
Nine on seven?
I agree.
Nine? John? Okay, nine on, on number seven. Dan, can we come back to, you made the case for number five, and you said?
No, I think John's, John's point is well-taken.
Okay.
That it, again, it's something that's more a result of us doing our job than it is something that we directly, I mean, I'd like to think we could directly do that, but I actually don't believe that government creates jobs in the private sector so much as, or an environment in which job growth can occur.
So it's important, but not as high as?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's not, we, it's, it's more directly. For instance, land use decisions, decisions that this board makes in this county directly affects jobs and business and taxation and revenue and everything. It, I can name many cases in my tenure on, watching government closely. You know, we had, as an example, we had, we, this board, well, the city was once, and County Menzina, has turned down two biomass plants that could have been in this county. That's, that would have been for cheaper energy, that led to, which helps job, job growth and everything, success valuation. So, what this board, it's not, we're not indirectly affecting the jobs and benefits. We, we have the ability to affect it directly.
Yes.
So John, what would you, given what you've said, and then I'm gonna come back to Dan, on number five, what's the weighting factor that we would now give that one? Having listened to each other, and Carrie, I don't know if.
Well, it has to come, come right at the top of the scale, maybe not, right up in the eight or nine line. I mean, it's gotta be high priority. You, you talked about revenue, Hans, but that's where it comes from.
Carrie?
It's not only Supervisor Pinch's land use decisions, but it's also regulation, and how, what we adopt, and how we apply it, and where we go with that, that is improving the local economy, promote jobs, business, and healthy environment, equate to that.
So you would rate it as what?
I would say probably a seven.
Okay. Kendall, would you like to weigh in on the number?
I wanna see what, uh, 'cause I, I was following what Supervisor McCowen was saying on that, and I was agreeing with his, with his, the thread of his thinking on that. I think it's very, very important, but we're narrowing down our decision-making to the things we have direct control over. It really is things like structural deficit, even though we are, that we have the vagaries of the federal and the state economies impacting us, as Supervisor Hamburg said, but ultimately, we have to make decisions that do what we can do locally, so.
Would you like to hear?
Super, yes, so what, uh, 'cause I'm.
Where were you now, John, on, on that one?
I think he was saying a five, or, did he give a number?
Number four.
Number five. Number five.
I think a seven.
A seven?
Seven, okay, well, we're pretty close. I think John Pinch has said a eight, is that correct, or a nine? And Carrie, you said a seven.
Seven. I would go with seven.
Seven, okay, great. Somebody thanked Stan for jumping in there and taking two of them. Kendall?
I'll jump in the one at the other end of the spectrum. I think number three, reduce unemployment cost, should be a fairly low priority. It's a very, it's a very small sphere of, of what we're dealing with, and it has a small application. I'm not saying it's not significant, but.
It made the list.
It made the list. So I think it should be, you know, I, I just wouldn't think it would have a high number, given the other priorities we have there.
What number would you give?
Well, I just don't know.
Well, take it, I'm sorry, but.
I don't know, maybe a four?
Okay, somebody weigh in.
I'm just throwing that out.
I know, we're just, thanks for your help, John.
Well, I was thinking five at most, and I could even go a three or four on that, for the same reasons.
Carrie?
I had it ranked as a three.
Okay. Uh, Dan, would you like to weigh in on this one?
Well, you know, it's, it's a cost, and it weighs against, you know, when we increase employees' job loss, we also increase our unemployment cost, 'cause we are, you know, it's our, coming out of our pocket. So, you know, again, I'm not sure it belongs in a separate category, but I guess I would give it a four or a five.
Okay. Two or four. Okay, so four. Did I sound right? Four? Sorry, I can't apologize. My voice is giving that, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, Carrie, you wanna weigh in on the one that we haven't discussed, or anybody else? We're getting, we're getting there. We're gonna start, we have left.
Okay, we have.
We have done eleven, ten.
We have six, eight, nine, and ten.
Which one do you, would you like, either as it's super important, or definitely not as important?
Well, I think that six is important.
Okay, and on balance, across all of those, make a case and give us a number so we can start working.
Okay. Making a case for customer service satisfaction, it's the constituents we're serving. If we're providing core services and the constituents, the county residents are not being served properly or efficiently, then you can look at some of these others, including five. Let's see, what else? I, I mean, you start looking at how these others tie into it. So where am I going with this?
You're suggesting a number now.
We'll follow along.
So six, I, I just feel that, you know, that that's a high priority, but certainly we have other pri, higher priorities we've identified. So I think I would give it a six.
Six? John?
Six for six.
I, I agree with that, I think either a five or a six, and I actually, I'm gonna make a pitch for number eleven.
Okay, but before we, we're going to get there.
Okay.
I promise you.
But, but, very, very briefly, the reason being that I think increased efficiency is how we're going to get to number six and seven, in large measure.
Okay, good. So we have a six on the table for number six, Kendall. You can just give us a number if you'd like.
Five or six here.
Five or six, thank you.
Five or six.
Five or six? Okay, let's, let's get bold and give it a 5.5. How's that? 5.5, yes?
Just to make things fun.
Yeah, just to make it interesting in the calculations. John, McCowan, do you want to take number eleven then?
Well, I just stated it basically, that is how we're going to improve customer service and satisfaction. The person is going to get better service at the counter because our employees are being more efficient at how they deal with whatever the process is, and, and our employees becoming more efficient is going to be how we're going to maintain the core services.
Okay, so what number would you give it, given that, that logic?
I could rate it an I.
I guess that means we have to be more efficient too.
Yeah, I assume that. Walk the talk, right?
Maybe a five or a three.
I'm sorry. Got to live it up.
Well, I just wonder, you know, here we are sitting here, in the last four years, we've basically reduced the system by 25, 26, 27 percent, right around there, and you, it's really easy to say, well, we're going to increase the efficiency, but how much, I mean, if you, if you really believe that we were totally off the wall ineff, inefficient, then I guess where we've come, we still have somewhere to go, but I just wonder how much more, I mean.
In a way.
When you, let me give you an example, when we talk about law enforcement, what do we do to tell a deputy, well, you know, where you used to cover between Leightonville and the county line, now we want you to cover between Ucaia and the county line, or, you know, I mean, how much more can you get in efficiency with a 25 percent already reduced workforce? I mean, there is, there is limits, I mean, it's a high priority efficiency. To me, you know, that's what we pay our department heads big money for, is they're supposed to make sure in their area that there's the most efficiency as there can be. That's, that should be inherited to the whole system.
But then, when we start weighting these against the options, some options will actually decrease efficiency, structurally will decrease. Some will maybe maintain it. Some may have the opportunity to enhance it based on the decision, perhaps. So you're actually saying, how important is it that we maintain or increase efficiency in the decisions that we make? That's what you're weighing against, and you're making a case for it being a nine, John, is that correct? I need people to either make another comment or weigh in, because we're kind of running out of time.
Well, it's not, it doesn't say maintain efficiency, it increases efficiency.
I would decrease.
An increased efficiency, when you've already reduced your system by 25 percent, is a lot harder than to continue to increase.
I would decrease, I, I would go significantly down from that number, given the direction we have been giving to departments for the last several years, and hearing department, departments coming back and citing specific examples about what they have done, clearly there's more to do, so I wouldn't make it a nine. I'd say it's, I'd say it's something we're already op, we're operating in that context anyway, already. I think Supervisor Pinch is sort of saying the same thing.
Would you?
I, I would go lower, just given the magnitude of the other issues on the list.
Okay, and that's what we're going to.
I'd say, I'd say a four.
Okay, anybody else, John?
Well, when we're looking at our budget actions, and they include workforce reduction, service elimination, going to a 36-hour week, if we don't continue to become more efficient at what we do and how we do it, we're going to see a very significant deterioration of services. So the, if we're really going to employ these strategies, the only way we're going to maintain service is continue to increase efficiency, and if we say we can't get more efficient, more efficient, we've already defeated ourselves.
So can I, Dan, you had a comment, and then I want to weigh in.
No, I'm about a six.
Six? Carrie, where are you?
I am at a six.
Six?
Nine.
So nine?
What did I say, four?
Four. Six?
It always has to be at the top of the list.
You're, so what, what number is that?
I would go with eight or nine.
I would go with six.
Six, so is it, you said six?
Seven point five, maybe?
Yeah. Can you live with, can you live with that? We, we need to move, but we're not, you have one, that's two people that are much higher. We're going to take the average. That's pretty close, what we, we could average out literally, but seven point five, can you live with it?
We're not being very efficient here.
Okay. We are going to be very efficient right now, because we're going to finish this up, and we have, we have to have time for public comment.
Does anyone object to seven point five?
Okay. You, you fine with that, John?
Sure.
Okay. What do we have left? We have eight, nine, and ten. Ten might have been subsumed, but we'll check on that. Eight, minimize county employee job loss. Some of those options will directly impact that, some may not. How critically, now, this is a tough one, I understand, but you're going to be making tough decisions no matter what. John, weigh in.
Again, about half of our criteria kind of point towards, we will have fewer employees. And I, and I think that, again, is going to be something that's going to be a result of other decisions that are made. I'm not sure that should be the criteria that drives the decision.
And so you would give it, not that it's not important, maybe there's less, but you'd give it an numerical rating of?
Five or six.
Five or six, Kendall?
Five or six.
Five or six? Five or six? Carrie?
I would go, based on the, what I've been using for my number count, I would say it's a five.
So 5.5, you live with that. Let's do minimize service reduction.
I thought that got folded into core service.
Of course, it did.
Okay, good. And Carrie, you, I believe, were saying that good for the short term and the long term was folded into one, but I'm not sure, is that, do you want to do that, or do you want to have that as a separate criteria? That's just, that's your group's decision, and we need to weigh out. Because I think John started with, that's the most important one on the whole list, is that correct? We don't have to eliminate it, it won't be a problem. There's no need to eliminate it now, but if you'd like to, that's your choice.
Yeah, I would keep it as a separate criteria.
Okay, and what would you give it, an numerical rating? John has weighed in for a 10, I believe, earlier, unless he's been.
No, I've stepped it up to a 12, actually.
He's trying, he's trying to bump the average.
That's right, that's right. He's, he's, he knows how to game the system, doesn't he?
Right, so I would say an eight or a nine.
Okay, others?
Eight or nine.
Eight or nine?
Eight.
Eight? Eight? You're a 10, or 12, so.
So if you take my 12 and add the eight, we're back to the 10.
No, no.
We're at 8.5.
8.5, all right. So let me tell you what we've accomplished.
Or did we weigh in?
You might go, what did we accomplish? We actually did a lot of work in a very short period of time. You've identified a set of strategic options, you've identified a list of decision-making criteria, you have weighted those criteria. I, I want to move as to what would the next steps, could the next steps be, because we do have public comment time, and I think we have an 11:30 adjournment time, is that correct? You don't have to make the decision here, I mean, you can make this decision, closed session, I don't know how it was made, I'm not, I'm a little naive about all of the processes.
Not in closed session?
Not in closed session, so, but in terms of going forward, what going forward would now mean, if we flick to this PowerPoint slide, just so you know. One second, sorry, I'm Christy by surprise here. We would go through these and now apply the workforce reduction, and people would make a case for how well, for example, does workforce reduction eliminate the structural deficit? We'd have that discussion on a one to 10 scale, and it's where it gets more detailed and important conversations. And then we would weight it against the weighting factor, and we do that for all of our strategies. It's a little laborious, but it's the conversation that needs, I mean, really, meeting of the minds and further clarification of definitions. So the next step is to actually complete this chart. More than likely it will happen, I can't tell you what the answers will be, they're your numbers, more than likely you'll see a couple that will stand out, and it'll paint a direction that you can then give to staff and say, or how, whatever you choose, come back with recommendations that fulfill these, or suggest recommendations that would then be quantified in a budgetary sense, that would take you down that path to making these really difficult decisions, in a way that you've agreed, continue to work together. They're tough decisions, and this objectifies that way of making very difficult decisions. So then, that would be the next step, is to literally go through this conversation. You've done the hard work, to be honest.
So sweet, when would you suggest coming back and doing that second phase?
I would suggest as soon as possible.
Okay.
Within two weeks. And unfortunately, we'd have to figure out schedules, I've got a lot of booked dates, you have a lot of booked dates.
Maybe three weeks?
Whatever we can make work. But that's your decision about whether you found this valuable and as a useful step. I would ask you, that's a discussion that you might want to have this afternoon, or I, I don't know, or you may want to have it, that's, Kendall, that's up to you, I'm kind of turning it back to you.
I think we should get on to public comment.
Yes.
So what would the board like to do? Have this discussion, the wrap-up later on today, or take a little time and do that before we adjourn for the morning?
It's, whatever, majority board agrees, but how soon will we have back some final notes?
We have it in the last 15 minutes.
On what we have, okay.
Before your afternoon session?
Okay.
So when would the board like to discuss next steps? I think we should hear from the public, and then maybe either we can do that, let's see how long public comment goes, if that works for the board.
Don't we have 11:30 close session, Kelly?
Yeah, but we can go a little bit, I want to make sure that we have plenty of time with public, and so we can go, we can go, yeah, we can go a few minutes beyond 11:30.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's decide.
And we could put close session off till the end of the day, if this board chose to go a little longer this morning. Okay, so let's.
And also, I, I think this is not actually a time for making a pitch for specific budget priorities, it's to the process and.
That's right. Yes, I was going to state that, that this, the public comment this morning is only about the, that we discussed here today. Anything that has to do with specific budget statements or comments would be held, we would hold those comments for this ap, this afternoon, and we reconvene at 1:30 in board chambers. So, sure, yeah, I, I think that's good. So, any members of the public wishing to come forward and speak, please come forward. We're going to do this somewhat informally, state your name for the record, it'll be the traditional three minutes.
This will just take 30 seconds. As a community member, I was skeptical of coming over to Ucaia for a workshop for the board supervisors, and I want to congratulate everyone for a very productive workshop.
Say your name.
Barbara Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Fry, and I'm here today on behalf of the Health and Human Service Agency Advisory Board, and I really want to applaud the board for taking this step of really thinking through strategic planning. And I would also offer that you have a number of advisory boards that are open to you and willing to work with you as you go through the strategic planning process, so I would ask that you think about including us at some point, or how we can make that happen. Congratulations on doing this.
Do I have to come up there?
Yes.
Go ahead.
See if somebody else wants to go.
We'll wait for you. Finch Thomas. The curing of the structural deficit, addressing the structural deficit is, is obviously a 10. I would say, however, that when you contrast that with the long-term benefit, short-term benefit, et cetera, that you can make a lot of decisions that might address the structural deficit, that would have horrendous consequences, but not on, not on your finances whatsoever. We've seen the state do that, we've seen the federal government do that, don't want to see you guys do it. Thanks.
Beverly Nutriss, thank you very much for your work today. I think it was very rewarding for citizens to watch you do this. I'd like to go back to the proposed strategic budget actions. I very much support the consolidation of services, and I'm glad you added that. On revenue enhancement, I believe that Mr. Pinch has made a comment that you'd already tried that with the tax thing. I would have suggested to you, had you gone to the public, saying you would put this money towards the sheriff and roads, that would have passed, because that's where the priority for the community is. I'd also like to add an item that I think you did not have on your strategic budget actions, and that is you need to look at your budget money retrieval. Ms. Smith had right on the nail, when there's a disconnect between how this process works, so that at that final moment, things happen with monies, and I believe there are monies that could be retrieved out of your budget, or should not be allowed there in the first place. And I think you all know that, it's just a real work effort to try to dig in and get those things cut down. The budgets, especially for supplies and services, need to be cut, and there is money there. There's still money in overtime, in annuities working, in extra personnel, you can do some cuts there. And there are places in the services you provide that you can cut for us. We need you to cut it, and not cut core services, and I think you all know what those are. Thank you.
I'm glad that you decided that you're going to keep the item seven as a major issue, and that it would have a high ranking, because as far as I'm concerned, if you don't keep the core services, then you might as well just close up shop right now. And to that end, the question I noted somewhere was, what are core services? When you get to a serious discussion of what are core services, it may be that you'll find that you can achieve efficiency by deciding that there are things that you just can't do, that, things that aren't the role of county government, and things, programs that should be terminated entirely, instead of asking for additional 5 percent or 10 percent cut from existing personnel, or shortening the work reach for everybody. I think you're going to have to look at that. I'd like to address John Pinch's remarks concerning land use, and I think this is a very vital issue. You, your effect on the county economy and jobs is entirely with what you do with land use. And to that end, you've spent in the last two years, three years, not counting this current year, over three and a half million dollars to do a general plan, which is not complete. Half the county, or a third of the county is still not done. And the work done on the general plan that you did complete is not complete, because you haven't done the necessary work to make it code and revisions that make it effective. So you've done a halfway job on a part of the one major issue that you have for letting people know what they can expect in terms of land use planning, and where they can do their economic planning for growth. Thank you. Jean Hert.
Thank you.
So, good job this morning, you guys did a great job, all members, the priorities. I guess, a little disappointment, disappointment in the improved local economy. There are some pretty good partnerships out there, and pretty good things that the private sector can do to increase your tax revenue, and you should count on us to do that. So, I don't know if these numbers are set, but if you want to reconsider that, I think that, that we can help you do your job. Scott Schneider.
Represent.
Lodging Association, Promotional Alliance, Visit Mendocino County, Tourism.
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure. What's the one?
I think this is such a valuable process, I'd like to see you somehow make it an opportunity to have a dialogue with a few members of the public to incorporate information, rather than having us speak as you finish, add comments, but somehow do it, and maybe do it out in the county. It was nice to have you eliminate, we do services in cities and unincorporated areas. We are all one county. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment?
Joe Bradley, Mendocino County Lodging Association, Visit Mendocino County. To the end of advisory boards, you guys have given a lot of us opportunities to be advisory boards between you and the associations that we work with, and you've got some really good minds, some people you don't even know or wouldn't recognize, and I think it's a really good thing to come to and talk to these people, because they, they've been doing your work as well as the people's work. So I think that would be a really good thing to look at, and using us as advocates and partners, because that's what we're all in, and we are all one county. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sure.
It's been suggested to me, and maybe other board members, that we have a commission on commissions? Because, you know, we have this long line of, of commissions, some of which are false, and those aren't full, and I know that, I mean, maybe it's because I'm new, but I kind of lose track, and I kind of, you know, I think there is a lack of communication between these advisory boards and the board of supervisors, and it seems that if there was some, somebody overseeing this besides the clerk of the board's office and us, that maybe we would get a better communication flow going between the advisory boards and the board of supervisors. Wildman, and, and a few other people have, have, you know, told me the same thing, like Antonio Andrade thinks that we have this real gulf between the boards and this board.
Yeah, I can only speak to my experience, and I've been involved with lodging, on the board of lodging since like '04 or '03, and was president for three years. I've been on. on our advisory board since its inception. I know we have a great communication, I believe, between the board supervisors and our advisory board, and that is through Steve Dunnecliff. And he does a phenomenal job of working with us, he comes to all the meetings. I don't know intimately the rest of his job. This lady mentioned she's on an advisory board or works, you know. Okay, so, so I mean, you've got advisory board members that are working through different ones of your personnel. I don't feel that we have a big rift. I can call into the tax collector, I've had to call into Janine's office, I've had to, you know, I have a running dialogue with any one of your other constituents. I have never met you, I missed meeting you, but I think there's not as much rift, but I can only speak to my own experience. And I think you need to use these advisory board members. They are chosen by these commu, like, our advisory board, I represent Lodging Association on our advisory board, but the four other seats, two are coastal, two are inland, and my guess is you would not know these people, and they just would pass you, and they're not on the board of the Lodging Association, so they're not necessarily somebody you would see. And they are very good minds, and very educated, and very much involved in what's going on.
Okay, I didn't mean a rift, so much as a gulf.
Well, rift, gulf.
But I just mean there's not as much input as we could benefit from. But not, it sounds like not in your case.
In our case, I feel like we've had a very good dialogue, once the dialogue got going and there was a value seen there.
Yeah, I, I'm just kidding. I actually think that's not a bad idea. I, I'm on the HHSA advisory board, I'm also the chair of the Workforce Investment Board, and I can see where, there are times we have lots of conversations that go like this, and, and to have an opportunity to sit with you and as a board, and as members of the public who are out there in the community, in business, doing what we do, to provide, you know, input to what are some very, very serious conversations, I think that would be a really great thing for this county to think about doing, because we do have great conversations in our advisory boards, or the Workforce Investment Board, or Mental Health Board, and then they, and it's not the, not the staff at all, they do a fabulous job, but then they kind of don't go where they need to go, and I think that's what Antonio's been talking about. So something for this board to consider maybe as an outcome of this strategic planning process, is some way to gather these minds that are working on your behalf out in the county, so, thank you.
I think Supervisor McCowen had a comment before you came up, Kathy, and then Supervisor Brown.
Thank you. Well, I think the board might take a look at formally appointing a member or having one of us volunteer to be a regular attendee at the Health and Human Services Agency Board and with the promotional board, because, you know, there's a lot of staff representation at these meetings, and they're very well informed, but I think you get a different level of depth of knowledge if you have a board member directly participate in these meetings. And I, I think that could be a great value, and I've often wondered, because I have, when I've had time, I've tried to sit in on the Health and Human Services Agency Board, and you really gain a lot of information that doesn't necessarily come through the staff reports, that may deal with the same issues. And I don't know that that's necessarily part of this process, but that's something I think we could profit by talking about.
Supervisor Brown?
Thank you, and I, I can wait to the end of public comment, if that's.
Sure, sure. Any other comments from the public?
Good morning, my name is Dr. Carvalho. I just wanted to compliment the board on the process. It's really good that we get to see the, the priority setting. For me, there was only one thing that I'd like to see incorporated in, in the future in terms of this, and that's, we talked about reducing or eliminating the structural deficit, and I think for everybody that's involved in it, to identify the structural deficit would be very helpful, because it seems to be something that people don't understand, and when we're setting priorities, if that's our top priority, I think it would be helpful for us to understand exactly what the structural deficit is. Thank you.
It's past 11:30, so anyone else? Okay, let's go to Supervisor Brown.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I, I feel that suggestions have been made, whether it's our community individuals or advisory boards, I, I do feel that this process should be expanded to perhaps focus groups. We did this with mental health, yes, there was an expense to it, but when I talk about cost versus benefit, there may be a lot of benefit to, you know, a small amount of money being put towards focus groups. Advisory boards, I certainly want to suggest that when you do have strong recommendations, that you meet with a board member, if, or a couple of board members, if you do not have them on your advisory board, just to talk to them about the issues, and maybe on a quarterly basis. So those are my suggestions as to the public that has come up. I'd like to make that to this board.
What came to mind for me when hearing from the very good public comments about advisory boards is possibly what the board could explore, maybe during, hopefully what is going to be a second planning session, take a little bit of time and talk about this, because I think it's clearly a community need, and it's not the first time that, that I think the concept has arisen, that the advisory boards have really very quality people involved, engaged, committed, they're volunteers, and how can we better utilize them? So what came to mind for me was the possibility of a quarterly roundtable, that would be an informal note, it would be a notice session of the board, but it would be an informal structure, so we could sit and talk to representatives of the various advisory boards, and have sort of what Kathy was talking about, that more free-flowing discussion, and get, get those, those discussions that may be going like this, and then the board is sort of privy to what, what those are, and possibly things could come from that. So, so to the board, since it's past 11:30, should we continue this discussion this afternoon and talk about next steps, and incorporate that into our afternoon discussion? What would the board like to do?
I think we could just very briefly have a wrap-up for today.
Okay, can we do it briefly?
I agree with the members of the public that said this was an excellent process. I've been to quite a few workshops, both as a member of the public and as a member of the board. I think this is the most productive one that I've been to, and I also really appreciate that the board worked very well together, even though I didn't always get my way.
Listen, it'd be a lesson to you.
So other board comments about?
Looks like a good direction to me.
Well, if that's coming from you, Supervisor. I think we're going forward.
Like I say, the devil's in the details.
So how does the board feel in, in this process? Would that be a good opportunity to set aside a brief amount of time to talk about the concept of next steps with advisory boards, be it part of this or not part of this process, but do it at that same workshop setting? Supervisor Brown?
Well, doing a long-term plan for this county, it's going to take this process, and it's also going to. Partnerships, which are the advisory groups as well as the community. And as one supervisor, I sure want to see a long-term planning strategy, not just five years out, but 10 years out. And so I think this has been a very fruitful session. I do agree with Supervisor McCowen, I've gotten a lot out of it, but I also want to say that's because of the individual that has led us through this. I've worked with Steve since, gosh, late 80s, I mean, it's been years, and I always appreciate how he takes us through the process. So I want to thank him, and Ms. Angelo, I also want to thank your mother for the biscotti.
Talk about efficient service delivery.
So, so does the board, I mean, her, will get the executive office staff working with Steve to come up with what would be a timely next, next workshop setting?
Yep. And I, I really agree that we do want to keep moving on this and not have a month or a two-month gap. We need to really stay focused on it.
Okay, so the board will adjourn to closed session, and we'll reconvene in board chambers at 1:30.
Thank you all very much.